First item on the list is discussion of Quail Creek Golf Course proposed new rates. Lynn Mazer and Pat's gonna come up and update us?
I think Jeff got to all of you the, his packet of information and research that he had conducted when looking at increasing rates. If you will remember, at one point in time, the council gave the pro at the golf course the ability to increase rates as he deemed necessary except for the annual fee. And that's what we're coming here tonight, asking for, Jeff is suggesting a hundred dollar across-the-board increase at all of the levels of our current fees. We haven't raised fees in six years. That's a very long time to go. And there are some folks who are gonna be a little shocked. But that's why you set a pace at which you increase fees when you're doing a club or an HOA sort of scenario where there are annual dues. I don't know if Jeff mentioned in his presentation to you all, but in addition to the one hundred dollar across-the-board, we are asking for the council to consider that we look at this in terms of increases that we can give maybe every three years, a percentage increase, not thereby, we don't have six years going by without an increase. But this would be something that we could go ahead and increase three years from now, the fee as we see necessary, up to a certain percent. But if we don't see a need to increase the fees, we wouldn't, and we would go another six years, which is not likely. In the information that Jeff gave you, he did a lot of comparisons of clubs, but the one that is the most relevant is Azalea City. That's the closest to us, it's a municipal course, and we do compete with them, believe it or not, we have a lot of back-and-forth play. You will find that they are more expensive than we are across the board, but they have a very simple fee schedule. So even with the hundred dollar across-the-board increase for us, our seven-day single annual fee versus Azalea City, which is twelve hundred dollars, our ranges are nine fifty, a thousand, eight fifty, and nine hundred. We would still, with an additional hundred dollars, we'd still be below Azalea. With the seven-day couple, it's the same scenario. They charge fifteen hundred dollars, and ours is twelve fifty, thirteen, eleven fifty, and twelve currently. And that's all based on your age and whether or not you reside within the city limits. We still differentiate. Most courses don't do that anymore. It's a flat fee, whether you're in the city or out. There were a lot of fees that we did away with. The last chart I saw just simplified our fees down to two basics.
From the?
Fifteen that we had before. I know. It was incredible. You had to guess how old you were and whether you were in the city or what, I mean, it's ridiculous. But now it's, it's under sixty and over sixty, and then we divide it into resident and non-resident. So that's essentially what we've come to ask you for. I will tell you that Jeff does have some other ideas of increasing nominally, some other things that he's allowed to, cart fees with our new carts coming in, and a couple other things. He's estimating that if you approve this hundred dollar increase, and with the other increases he's figuring on, he's estimating ninety-nine thousand dollars increase in revenue this year, which is what you wanted to see.
That's right. Unfortunately, but yes. Counsel, y'all have any thoughts on the increases?
When you say a hundred dollars across the board, I'm not a golfer, so what are we talking about?
Well, right now, if you are a, I'll go to the chart.
Any one of these passes that you referred to? You just jumped them a hundred off?
Well, if you're paying, right now, if you're paying nine hundred dollars for a pass, you're gonna pay a thousand. If you're paying eight fifty, you're gonna pay nine fifty.
Okay.
And it doesn't make any difference whether you're inside-
So these ones are the ones that have already gone up?
Those?
Nine fifty?
That's old. I mean, those are, those have already gone up. That's, that's the older. We had fifteen different schedules.
So what is, right now, what are you looking for, for a one-single inside city limits, under sixty?
Inside the single limits, well, let me get to the page. Under sixty, the single inside currently is nine fifty, would go to a thousand fifty.
Okay, so every one of these just come up a hundred dollars?
Right.
I'm with you, okay?
On this sheet that's in our One Note, it says, it's eight fifty. Is that?
That, sixty years in older is eight fifty inside.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I don't have any problem with it. I think it's overdue myself, given the amount that improvements that have been done out there, done, and how much the city subsidizes the course. I know it's there for the public, but-
You gotta make up a little bit of that.
That's right.
And we are looking to do some more improvements this year with restructuring some of the greens and doing some more definition along some of the fairways. So, you know, we are looking to improve where we can and do most of the work that we can in-house.
I will tell you, with the play that goes back and forth between Azalea and Quail Creek, the men have said one thing, they pay more for over there, but our course is in far superior condition, and we need to keep it that way.
I think the two that stood out to me would be Azalea City Golf Course and Mobile. Lake Forest, I guess we would be somewhat comparable to, and we're, we're far cheaper than both of those. And of course, Rock Creek is not far from us, but, you know, I guess you could argue that their conditions are a little better than ours currently.
Private, semi-private, yeah.
And, and they operate differently. They, they have initiation fee, and then they have monthly dues, and we just don't work that way. We are either an annual fee, and then you come and pay as you play. And that, that puts a lot of restrictions on your revenues.
Captain's crunching some numbers.
I'm just checking. I don't have a problem with it, I'm just-
Okay. You're going over an old list, however.
Well-
The new list is only gonna have four, four groups.
Right. And there's something-
Under sixty resident, under sixty non-resident, over sixty resident, over sixty non-resident.
Right. Yeah, the new, yeah, you should have the new.
I got an old and new. Is new the current rate, what we're looking for, or is it still old?
Twelve, fourteen, fifteen.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, yes.
I didn't know if this was the old for between fourteen and fifteen, and the new is what we're looking for, or this is the new from fourteen and fifteen.
There are no new numbers in there.
On this sheet?
Yeah, nothing new in that sheet. And at some point in time, this is my personal aside, we may want to look at simplifying that annual, and right now, we work on a rolling twelve months. We may want to think about making it the fiscal year, and we can prorate everybody into starting October first. But there's a lot to be said for getting the money in-house and having it at our disposal for work on the course.
That makes sense.
Okay.
I think you got support.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank y'all. Item one B on the work session tonight, Jeff Montgomery asked to speak.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I won't take much of your time. Whenever I change a program or something, I wanna make sure that you're aware of what I'm doing, and so, so what I'm, we, our printer copier lease is coming up in January, and it's gonna be on the, we need to get it on the next agenda to get new copiers. So we, I took a look at how much we're spending right now on desktop printers and see if there's a better way that we can do what we're doing. I went through all the requisitions, and the second page at the top right is the total of how much we're spending right now just on ink for all the desktop printers. Those are all the requisitions that I found on the preceding pages. Then after that, I've got a list of all the, all the desktop printers that are out there in the city. So what, I've been working with Dex Imaging, they have a solution out there, it's called a print count program, where they basically barcode every desktop printer that we have in the city, and they have a program to where they manage all parts, toner, any kind of supplies, including ink, for, for the desktop printers. And so what it is, is kind of like a program that sits on the network, and if it, if it notices that it's getting low on ink, it'll go ahead and automatically order, or if they're having an issue with the printer not printing, there's a, there's a barcode on the, on the printer where they can call a number and get service. And they're, they're proposing, they've, they've watched our print counts for, for a couple weeks, and they came up that if we were to go out with our current vendor that we're buying ink from, that's the cost savings, eighteen hundred versus eight hundred dollars. So, I mean, I think it's a pretty good program. It's on the state contract, so I mean, I think we get a pretty good discount on, on the ink that we, that we get already. So that, that's one of the programs that I would like to introduce and start doing this year. The second program, well, the next page shows what we're currently paying for copiers right now. We're gonna get rid of two at the Nick Center. That one is just not utilized very much, so what we're gonna do is take one of the beefier desktop printers and network it, and make sure everybody can print to it. It can do copies, imprinting and scanning as well. So there, I don't see a, a need for a large copier there, as well as Quail Creek. They've got a pretty nice size HP desktop printer now that can, should be able to handle all their needs just fine. So we're gonna get rid of those two. But that's what we're paying right now per month for copiers. So what, on the Dex Imaging, the Alabama State Contract, their, their prices with, with those subtractions are just a little bit cheaper. So the last piece that I'm gonna add is what's called a paper cuts, they call it a paper cut solution. Basically, what it is, it allows any, any employee to just walk up to any copy, if they, if they print a job, they could walk up to any copier and swipe their employee badge and print the copy. While, while this is good, it's, well, you can get your copy faster, plus you can, we can start tracking which department is printing what documents. So we could charge the appropriate department based on how much they're printing. The, oh, so the other good thing too is that if you do have a desktop printer and you go to print a, a big job that's over maybe thirty pages, whatever we set, a message will come up saying, this is a big job, it's been, being redirected to a copier. And the reason why that's beneficial, because the copiers print, when they print, their page per, print per page is a lot cheaper on a copier than it is a desktop printer. So if they were to try to print large jobs, it'll be redirected to a larger copier, then they just go up and swipe their badge and grab it. So, so what I'm adding this year is the paper cut solution, and I wanna add the, the, the print count program. And I think, but by adding these two things, it'll help us save a little bit of money. And I just wanted to kinda get y'all's opinion on it.
Is this keeping all of them, like if they're black and white, it's keeping them black and white?
Yes.
Because I do want a color printer.
Yes, we, currently, we don't have any color copiers, but then, all the proposed copiers in here are color.
Okay. It'll default to black and white?
It'll default to black and white. They have to go in and check boxes to make it color. So Public Works has the biggest copier out of everybody, they have the most copies, so they got the, the bigger model, and down at the bottom, you'll see what their, their cost per copy for black and white and cost per copy for color is. The next page, where the police department, it says two, but it's actually one of them's for City Hall and one of them's for Police Department. They get a little bit smaller unit, they still has the same capability, it's just, just not as big. We just don't need to pay that much for a copier that's not being utilized as much as the one in Public Works, over the Public Utilities Building. But each page has, down at the bottom, just what their cost per copy is. And then the last page is the plotter for the Planning and Building Department to print out their, the big maps. We leased that, and that lease is ending as well, so we're gonna be leasing a new, new unit for that, for that department.
I thought one of those was in the budget. Did we take it out? Wonder what, plotter in the budget?
Yeah, I think so, but I, we found out, I've talked with several different people, and we found out it's better to lease them, because they're used so much, you only get a three-year lifespan out of them anyway, might as well lease it. Because if you purchase one, you're gonna have to purchase one in thirty-four years anyway. So that's, that was my thinking behind that. So I mean, if everything looks good, I'm gonna try to get on the next council agenda. I just didn't wanna just blindside you with, you know, additional products that we're getting this year. But I think by adding these, we will save a little bit of money on the, especially on the ink side. All right.
Counsel, any questions?
I guess the only thing I would wonder is, employees that are actually having to print and prepare stuff, will that be a hassle to them to have to go swipe their card, pick it up at a different copier, a different location? I mean, is that, has everybody pretty well got a copier-
Right.
-in their department, or they're gonna have to have some people that are gonna have to now-
So we're basically doing a one-for-one swap of what we have right now.
Okay.
Right. So, yeah, they're in, they're in, they're in, you know, locations to where if they have big jobs, that it's not too far for them to go to get a-
And you can print from your computer.
Right.
I just was wondering, I mean, if somebody was having to leave one building to go to pick it up somewhere else?
No, I don't think we have that, no. I mean, we, I mean, with the software, we could do that, like if Nick Center all of a sudden had a five-hundred-page, something to print out, maybe we would wanna send it to the City Hall copier to save a little bit of money instead of doing it on the desktop solution, but-
Something that large, you're not gonna need immediately.
Right. And we have runners that could, you know, print out and take it to them if, if need be, so, but.
Any more questions? All right, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, item number two on the work session, committee updates. Captain Boone?
We had a personnel board meeting, which, last Monday, Wednesday, like I said, and unfortunately, I was not able to attend. But we were discussing the safety practice, I think, for the city. And I don't have any idea what the resolution is, we'll go and find out. Other than that, that's it.
And for me, Historic Preservation Committee meets this week on Wednesday. Environmental Advisory Board meets this week on Friday, and Library Board is not meeting in the month of December, and I don't have any update from, from the last council meeting, so that's it for me.
All right, the Head Bike Committee did not meet in December, didn't have anything pressing to meet about. The Education Advisory Committee held their, their last meeting and assigned the nine people to the, the new Fairhope Public School Commission. That's on the agenda tonight, but I'll go ahead and tell you, one-year term, Hill Robinson, Tanya Bossards, and Ken Cole, two-year term, myself, Kerry McLemore, and Robin Coleman, and three-year term, Miranda Shrubby, Danielle Mashburn-Marek, and Cornelius Woods. It was a recommendation from the EAC. We took action at that last meeting, you know, to dissolve the EAC and form the school commission, so everything should be in order. January one for the school commission to take over overseeing the, the funds from the K-1 purchase, as well as the three-mill tax district, so other than that, that's it. All right, Department Head Updates. Richard?
I do wanna put a plug in for Jeff, just so you know. Right now, when I printed the agenda and work session agenda, this is what I have to do, I have to print it, and I have to walk to a printer, I have to put a code in, then I have to pick the items to print, put the code in again, hit print. To be able to just do that would be the greatest thing since sliced bread, so. Now, the good news is, I get a lot of exercise going to the printer, okay? And that, that's a positive, so. Just, just a couple of things. One, we did meet the deadline at the end of November and got in the Rebuild Alabama application for consideration of introducing a sidewalk to Fairwood Boulevard between Bayou and Fairhope Avenue. We'll let you know when we hear something, but Bike Head got us a, a letter of support as part of that process, and we got that turned in. Just to kinda jump ahead, I know that I met with Ms. Mazer, as well as Councilman Boone and Council President Burrell out at Fairhope docks last Thursday evening, and I, and I don't wanna speak too much ahead, but there was at least a request to see and explore the opportunity to go ahead and decommission and remove the travel lift and actually complete the bulkhead along that frontage. I believe everybody has scrambled very hard, and if y'all choose to want to entertain that tonight, it, it is teed up and available for you to walk on. I, I found that the price that we got for the demolition to be, I, I, Ms. Mazer and I expect it to be a lot higher than what it was, so I, I don't think it's a, a bad value, if that's something you wanna pursue, or if you'd prefer to wait till the next council meeting, that, that is your, your prerogative there.
It's nothing time-sensitive, I mean?
No, I think that we're, the contractor is going to be there-
He's still be there.
... in the next two weeks, and especially with the holidays, I, I think that's probably gonna slow down, but, but it is teed up if y'all, if y'all wanna act, and, and I don't think it's a bad value if, if it's time to do that work. And just to, as far as, I'd be glad to ask, I've got quite a few things on, on the normal business agenda tonight. Of course, we've got the Quail Creek roof, as you know, when we did the remodel, we did do the south hip of the roof, but we did not address the, the north or the east-west, and you see that price there. And we have our flowers and our planting soils, which is pretty much standard operating procedures, as well as we do part of, part of the, when we had originally, the contractor at Fairhope docks for the bulkhead, his, his directive in the contract documents was he was to maintain the electrical in place with city forces to come back and to, to pre-plummet with conduit and everything else. But as soon as we exposed everything at G dock, the electrical, which is so bad, you see that there's a, a resolution to authorize us with in-house forces to go ahead and replace that electrical. It just, what was there could not be maintained, it's not safe, and everything else. And we've talked about this, the, the Cambridge Court is on there as well, and I'll be glad to ask, answer any questions, but I think we've talked about that ad nauseam. So that's it, unless you have any questions for me. Everything else is going well. Our two sidewalk projects are wrapping up. We have completed all the paving except for the striping, and they're working on that now, and, and we're just busy in public works. Anything else?
Got a question. I know everybody's busy. What about the garbage pickup calculation, one day versus two days?
It's funny that you ask Mr. Linder, and I spent some quality time on that today, and I'm hoping that, that now that the dust of the budget has settled and everything else is, that if it looks like we got a pretty light work session on, I think it's the twenty-third, twenty-second we're meeting on? Twenty-third, two weeks in a day?
The nineteenth.
Are we back on the nineteenth again?
I think it's all the changes.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm hoping to ask to sit on the next day and start introducing that and having that conversation, so we've been working on it. Thank you.
But we did mention in the budget that we would propose it beginning of the year. I mean, so.
Well, the, the good news is, is that, you know, we, we have the last one-dollar increase that will take effect January one, so that, that's already in place, and, and, you know, there's no doubt that, that the contemplation, if that's something we wanna contemplate, we, we will also make a recommendation of what type of timeline it would take to transition to, to that type of service if we change it, so.
We're also gonna do a survey. That's what we said, beginning of next year, because we wanna give time for people to weigh in.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lynn?
Just two real quick things. We had a wonderful Thanksgiving down at the Marina, twenty people, and we had a great time. The word is now out on DAKWA and the Looper's Network, and we'll see what happens next year. I think it's gonna be a bigger-than-a-twenty-pound bird next year. Also, tomorrow night is the first annual employee happy hour at the clubhouse, combined with the annual sale. And the happy hour's open to everybody, but we're encouraging employees to come on out, enjoy the facilities out there, and free hors d'oeuvres and discounted drinks at the clubhouse.
Thank you. Kim, you have anything? Jessica? Terry? Chief? Richard?
On his way.
Peterson?
I don't have a lot of room, but, however, y'all will see.
Good. Seems like we have a big machine planted in the middle of the road. Down there at Fairwood, boring that monster boring machine.
That is a huge boring machine, and I think they're setting up now to go from section at Bayou to Fairwood at Bayou, and hopefully next week, they'll be doing some of that work. But the, the lift station replacement at Fells has kinda gotten off to a slow start, and we, we're, we're working out, but there was one, one of the two gas lines wasn't located during the survey, so it became an issue about proximity to the wet well. And we worked out the, the fix for that, which we've eliminated one of the manholes that we were gonna use anyway, so we, we got the contractor now on board to start this week, trying to get the wet well that's been out there buried and getting connections to that wet well from the, the old lift station, so hopefully we're, we're moving forward with that. I talked to Mark Delaney with Cunningham Delaney. He's, he's aware that people are anxious about getting started, and if nothing else, and it looks like there's gonna be quite a bit of a deduct when it starts, when we start to itemize everything that they're gonna take off of the project. And, you know, I, I told him that we would look at a summary change order at the end of the job that would, you know, compensate them for the things that they add and reward us for those that we've eliminated. But the important thing was to get started with getting the thing put in.
I've been telling everybody it's a family-sized Dunkin' Booth.
That would be a good Dunkin', but that was going pretty good. Of course, the, the force main work over around the school is, is going pretty well. We're trying to get advertisement out right now. I've, I've not been able to finish looking at the contract documents, but trying to get advertisement out for the Church Street project. Hopefully, we can get that in this week and, and get finished with it. We're working on a couple of things with cleaning up issues that have occurred over the history at, at Pecan and Liberty. There was three houses on Pecan that chose to have one connection to the sewer at Liberty, and now there's a house that's being built over the top of that sewer connection, and we're, we're trying to convince everybody to work together to relocate the, the lateral connections to the houses on Pecan, to Pecan where they belong, and we've done some video assessment of that system out there. I've, I've left information with the property owners. I've talked to one of them in detail about what we wanna try to accomplish, and, you know, it's like herding cats, trying to get people together to, to talk about spending money, 'cause nobody seems to wanna do that. But they understand the issue, and, and working with the property owners building the house, we're working on that as, as a resolution. I don't think it's gonna require us to do anything. If anything, we'll provide some of the work in the right of way to, to lessen the burden on each of the homeowners. We've got a couple of things on the agenda. The Wind Cam software is a software that allows us to incorporate the videos that we're collecting out in the field with each sewer segment. We're able to put those into the mapping software without having to download them and then load them back into a different program and then post them on the map. It's become very difficult to track everything that we do with what we have available to us today, so this software will- so this software will help eliminate some of the backlog we have now, getting everything we have on the map. The trailers of, you know, it's a pretty standard backup trailer we've got on order that should go through pretty well. And the UV system at the wastewater plant is something that we talked about during the budget presentations, and it's just allowing us to replace the backup UV system that's old and parts that aren't available anymore with a new unit. So we're looking forward to getting that done. But other than that, I can't, unless y'all have a question or complaint that I can try to help work on for you, or. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Bagel? Eric? Hunter?
Real quick, we have a lot of times, we need to talk about something else. I'm more than willing. We got time for dinner in between this one, I think. If I'm really quick. Just FYI on item seven for the Live Vote PUD. We had some changes on that, it's going to have to be re-advertised, so that, we should remove that from the agenda. I think that was continued last week, our last council meeting. We had to re-advertise that. That is currently scheduled to appear back on the agenda on January thirteenth, is the way the advertisement went out, and for the first hearing. So we've got that one. And Lisa, we talked about this a little internally. I think it's important for council to know, at least on some of these zoning changes, there are state laws that require that advertising in newspapers and along those lines that, especially here in Fairhope, hit pretty hard. There's some, you know, it's partly due to the language in the state law and partly to do with the advertising means we have accessible to us. So I think Emily and I looked at that today, and the best-case scenario, if we have to re-advertise something, that's a four-week delay. Worst case is somewhere around two months. And there's really no alternative to that right now. The state law was last updated in nineteen ninety-two, and newspapers have changed greatly in their importance in our daily lives. You know, it used to, I think, when that was contemplated, it was, it ran consecutively. So you might get all that in one week and, you know, be able to hear a case again. Whereas now, I think they're weekly or maybe two times a week. So it's, you know, best case, I think, for four weeks and one day. By our current standards, run two consecutive weeks and wait fifteen days. So, you know, depending on council schedules, that can, that can really delay projects. And I think one of the things we've, as we're looking at development, one of the things we can do to help the development side, but it also helps our ability to negotiate, is if we can shorten that time, you know, it's a challenge to ask someone to change something minor, know that it's going to delay a project two months. That can be a, but if it's only going to be a week or the next council meeting, that might be an asset to the city. So, you know, I think changing state law is about the only option we have. It's time, that's been ninety-two, so that may be something we ask. If there's any support, any means y'all have, talking to the legislators or, and feel for that, that can get an opinion. I know it's been discussed around the state, we're not the only ones. That was something we were, it's a challenge too, because what's available locally, there's cities over a hundred thousand that don't have to advertise. You know, they just kind of posted on a bulletin board. But because they don't have a local paper, and by that definition, it's class-two mailing license there. It's not really. Right, so it's some of those, you know, kind of almost a gotcha that we're getting caught up with. You know, if there's any legislators we can get some feedback from, see if that would be a palatable amendment to the state constitution, that would be helpful.
All right.
Anything else from the planning side? Thank you.
All right. That's all we have on the work session. We'll run through the agenda real quick, make sure we have who we need here if we need to discuss anything. Item five, six, and eight, I guess Hunter would be you. Number nine, would that be memorandum of understanding between the city and the police department? Would that be chief? Okay. Chief on number ten as well. Number eleven, award of bid for backup trailer for Water Department? Peterson? Roof repair, Richard Johnson, if we need anything. Firewall system, Jeff Montgomery. Virtual desktop infrastructure, Jeff Montgomery. Fifteen, procure, who's that?
Police Department.
Yep, chief. Sixteen. RJ. Seventeen, RJ. Eighteen, RJ. Nineteen, camera truck RP. Richard Peterson, twenty. Michael, twenty-one. Twenty-two, Michael. Twenty-three, is that going to be Lynn, RV parking?
Answer questions if you can.
Okay. Anybody has any questions? Twenty-four, just appropriation. Twenty-five, appropriation. Twenty-six, appropriation. Twenty-seven, appropriation. Twenty-eight, appropriation. Twenty-nine, appropriation. Thirty's appropriation. Thirty-one, Richard Johnson. Thirty-two. Call Jack if you got any questions. And so that's it. All right. That concludes our work session. We've got a nice little break before the council meeting at six o'clock.